All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's go ahead and call the committee of the whole meeting to order for September 12th. Let the record reflect a starting time of 5:00 PM. And with that, Clerk Boat, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Hussein.
President.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
We have a quorum of council.
All right, that brings us to the meeting minutes from August 22nd, 2022. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move the minutes as written for August 22nd.
All right, there's a motion on the table. Further discussion, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It takes us to agenda item number four. It's public comment on agenda items. We will provide anybody in the gallery with up to three minutes to speak to any of the items on the agenda. We do have a presentation tonight, as well as four items for discussion and action. As will be explained later, the closed session is no longer something that we will actually adjourn into. So with that being said, if there is anyone, we do take public comment on a first-come, first-served basis. We simply ask that you state your name, both first and last, for the record.
Loretto Stanaway. Couple of things on your agenda tonight. The Board of Water and Light proposed rate increases. I'm here to just tell you, please, freeze the rates where they are. They're already beyond most people's reaches, and they cannot sustain any further increases. Payment in lieu of taxes, pilots, you're asking about the impacts. The impacts of these things are continued degradation of the services that the citizens receive for their tax dollars. Every time you issue a pilot, you decrease the amount of money coming into the general fund that can be used to pay for police and fire and roads and services, trash collection, you name it. We cannot withstand continual increases in a loss of services to provide private developers with profit. They need to do what all of us have to do when we are faced with tight finances. They need to downsize or right-size, just like we have to do. If a project isn't profitable at the level they want to build it at, they need to scale it back to where it is profitable. If you had a moment to think about it, the annexation issue, I think the judges made the right call in both of those appeals that the city filed. You cannot ask the taxpayers of two municipalities to suffer the consequences of a decision and not empower them to have a vote on that decision. The short-term situation in that township may very well resolve, and the consequences of an annexation would be long-term that the people then would be stuck with. As you consider different things on the agenda tonight and in the actual city council meeting, I ask that you remember that if you looked at everything that has happened in the last nine months and made an Excel spreadsheet of all the different things that have come down the pike, well, it's just a little more here, it's just a little more there, it's just a little more here, it's just this, it's just that, it's just that. You add it up, and you reach a point where you are at more than the public can bear. It is just more than we can handle. And we are still looking at a public safety building, and we are still looking at City Hall, and you're drowning us. Please, throw us a life raft. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public wishing to make public comment? Only once going twice, seeing none. That takes us to discussion-action item, let's see, I'm sorry, this is number five, a presentation from Chief Strategy Officer, Ms. Shelby Freyer. If you want to come on down through the double doors, you kind of, you know the drill. Make sure the, yep, yep, that's perfect. Make sure the green light's on, you can pull that close to you so we can hear you. How are you doing? Good, it's good to see you.
There we go.
All right, let's test that out.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you. All right, so just a little bit of background. As folks know, back in 2019, the financial health team and the city council kind of collaborated on, in order to create this position, we actually hired Shelby Freyer in, I believe, August of that year, 2019.
Correct, yeah.
Shelby was actually with us for 10 months, at which time she actually decided to explore some other employment opportunities, and we filled the position with Ms. Judy Kayler. Judy left earlier this year, and we hired Ms. Shelby Freyer back into the position. So we certainly appreciate her being here. In terms of the ordinance, there is some language in the ordinance that speaks to conferencing on a semi-regular basis on what we call a mutually agreeable schedule. And the spirit of that, as I was, you know, part of the team that actually wrote the ordinance and helped to create that position, the spirit of that was to ensure that we were providing some measure of transparency for the public, but also some measure of inclusivity for the council. And so what we asked essentially Shelby Freyer to do tonight was to speak to any of those things that she's been working on, when we look at short-term expenses, when we look at long-term expenditures, when we look at inefficiencies, whether that be intra-department, interdepartment. And also, actually outlined in the ordinance is, you know, kind of this, I won't say requirement, but this encouragement, you know, if there is policy recommendations and the like from the CSO, that those are conveyed from the CSO to the city council. So with that being said, I'm going to turn over the floor. My understanding is you did receive some questions prior to tonight, so we're going to obviously let you run through that, and if there are any questions, comments from council members, we'll certainly entertain those at the end of Ms. Shelby Freyer's presentation. You're up.
Thank you. Did you guys all receive that one-page outline that was in your packet? I hope. No outline, one page or...
No, I don't believe we had that. I'm sorry. Was it an outline of answers to questions, or what?
Yep, so I had just put together kind of an outline of the projects that I'm working on right now for...
No, we did not receive that.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have my computer in any...
Yeah, yep. Perfect, thank you.
Great. Maybe I'm just not speaking loud enough, is that better?
It's on, yeah, you just got to make sure you're actually speaking into it. Thank you so much.
Sure. Do you want me to wait for you guys to have that, or just get started?
I think we can get started. Yeah, let's get started.
Okay, great. So one of the things, and I've had an opportunity to meet with a couple of you guys since I've been back about four months now, one of the things I have really been focused on is kind of a rebrand, if you will, from my last time here. As you guys remember, my last, I call it tour of duty here, was I had basically two positions, strategy officer and finance director, so my role was much different than it is now coming back in this role. I was more focused on kind of quick cuts and things that we could do to save dollars in our budget, where this time I really focused on, you know, growing revenues from a long-term perspective, which is two very different sides of the house. So my last four months have really been focused on either new revenue or revenue growth for the city on a long-term basis. So that being said, a couple of the projects that I'm helping the mayor's office kind of facilitate through the city is the Public Safety Millage, of course, that you guys know about, as well as the Performing Arts Center. Those are two projects I'm kind of helping project manage, coordinate with legal, coordinate with finance, coordinate with outside vendors in order to get those projects done. So those two have been top on my list, and definitely a top priority for the mayor. Certainly time-consuming, and very important that we get them right, so spent a lot of time on those. You guys are looking like you're scrambling. Have you had that document yet? No, okay.
We do not. Mark did get up. I think Mark actually is taking upon himself to print, so...
Okay. I'll probably be done by the time he gets it, but that's all right. Okay. I've also been working with the chamber and lobbying team on legislative asks, you know, with the state having $7 billion coming, we certainly want a piece of that, so working on a regional ask that we're having all three counties work together on. We certainly want Lansing to be in the running for some of these dollars, so us working with that team. In addition, one of the projects of the CSO has always been, you know, seeking out new revenues, whether it be grants to fund projects, or other opportunities that the city could do to bring in revenue either one-time or ongoing, so spending some time with our, the grants that we know we've got coming from the federal government and state government, of course. Another project that I started working on actually the last time I was here and have kind of revisited was, the city has a ton of, ton of vendors that we work with for all different kinds of projects and services, which is great, but oftentimes those vendors get here, and then their contracts just get rolled over, whether we're needing them or not, or whether we're utilizing those contracts and things like that. So one of the projects I have on my list is to identify kind of the top 20 highest-paid vendors that we have, and go through and identify, one, are we using their service? Are we getting everything we're paying for? Do we have an active contract? Are there other things we can do to either bid those services out for a lower cost or better service? But of course, that has savings typically attached to it, so that's another project on my list. And then, of course, I have, you can't see my sheet in front of you, but assets and liability analysis, of course, looking for any quick wins that we can do to either offset general fund expenditures into enterprise funds or funds that are making us money versus just keeping what we've got in general funds. So another exercise kind of through the accounting process. As you guys know, we're kind of in between having real up-to-date financials. You guys passed a budget here, you know, for July 1. Our audit's underway, that we're in the current fiscal year right now, so that we can tie out both this last current year and where we're at now, so January we'll have a much better picture about where we're at. So that's kind of high-level, so it's a really long-term revenue focus, definitely some economic development project management, along with your general assets and liabilities review. Just in time.
Right, and as you anticipated, you did outpace Mark.
I did, yeah.
By a second.
It was high-level. Yeah, you did great, yeah.
So what we're going to, so as you guys, you know, kind of review those and are able to reflect on what we just discussed, feel free at this point, if you have questions, for Shelby, if you have comments, this would be the time. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. One of the things I want to touch on is the contracting. One of the things that we've seen here on council, again, as you talk about some of the top 20 that we use and keep rolling over, we had at least one situation, and we might have more situations, where vendors are not current with their licenses that they need to have for a particular service that they're giving to us. Is that part of your look as well?
You know, I haven't included it. I think that's a great idea. I've been looking at it more from a financial perspective, as far as, do we have an up-to-date contract? When was the last time it was bid? But certainly adding, you know, are they up-to-date on their taxes? Do they have, you know, a license in place? There are definitely things that I could add to my review. That's great.
Well, one, I think the licenses in place are extremely important if we're having them do work. Let's just throw out, and if Jeremy were here, he'd be talking about electricians or plumbers or things like that, to make sure that they have their current certifications and their licenses for that. But I think it's also critical that if we're paying them tax dollars, that they ought to be current with their current taxes, and that is part of the purchasing ordinance. But when we roll over a contract, the question is, is that being looked at on a regular basis to make sure? If I was current back here 20 years ago, and I've been your contractor all along, but I might not have been paying my taxes, you know, there's a problem there.
That's right. Nope, I can definitely add that to my list. I think that's a great suggestion.
I think the other one, and we had this a while back, I think before you were here, and that was to make sure that they're current with their insurances. We had a situation where we had a painting company that had done some work in one of the parking garages and actually sprayed paint, ended up on vehicles, and we found out that the contractor didn't have current insurance.
Okay. Nope, thank you. I'll add that to my list.
So if we could, if we could look at those. Are you, and have you been working with the state, looking at the retirement system as far as the grants that they have the potential of granting? And I think ERS, the Employees Retirement System, is one that falls into that category.
Yep, so the back-of-the-envelope math for me, when I looked at it from our 21 valuation, is that we were down about 54% funded, which would open us up, of course, for that 6% potential grant that you're speaking about, so that came through. We're anticipating right now those dollars to flow through Department of Treasury, which most of them have, which of course, their budget year doesn't start till October 1st, so I'm guessing we're not going to have any guidance until then. But my kind of back-of-the-envelope math estimated between 12 and 13 million at that valuation at 54%. Now, another thing we haven't learned about yet is that what year we get to take that valuation, because obviously portfolios for this last year didn't do as well. So if our percent in fact dropped to, let's say, 50 or 52%, that's additional grant we might be able to get. So yes, myself and the finance team, I know Desiree's also working on this, and keeping an eye out, too, looking for guidance from the Department of Treasury when we know we can go for this grant.
I know you're not responsible for finance, but I also know that you work closely with them.
Absolutely.
So, you know, part of the issue that we currently have is information that was supposed to go to the actuary at the end of June has not gone to them. So they received that from our money managers on June 15th, and was supposed to have been translated to the actuarial company on the 30th, so that we could have this report done. So, you know, we have the potential of not having a report ready that you could utilize with this downturn in the market right now.
I hadn't heard that information. I'll certainly pass it along to the finance director, and of course, the chief of staff's over here to follow up to with that department.
Well, we will be having a retirement meeting tomorrow, and that will be one of the topics to find out why. Again, this is something that we have, you know, put in as part of the retirement board policies for both fire and police and the ERS, so that the actuarial companies had time to be able to do that, what they needed to do. And June 30th was when that information is supposed to be over, and we're not meeting those deadlines.
Okay. Yep, I hadn't heard that, but, yep, thank you.
My last question deals with the Performing Arts Center. I know, could you give us a little bit more information on how you're working on that?
Sure, so my primary goal right now is to make sure we've got the financing behind it to do this project. The city right now has certain dollars that we've identified, that we can use for this project, and we still have a gap. So until the city is ready to commit to either buying property or any sort of commitments with contracts or labor to do this work, we want to make sure we can fund it. So that's priority one. So that's really what I'm focused on right now, is we were not successful with the wrap grant. I'm not sure if you guys heard or not, but we had gone out for some funding through the MUDC that was not successful to help us close that gap, so we're looking at alternative sources now in order to help supplement that project that we want. So nothing final, nothing official, we're still working on that project.
Okay, thank you.
Just to piggyback on that very quickly, so in terms of, I guess for lack of better phrasing, sorry, did you have something you need to say? Okay, sorry. What is, so what is our current capital stack? And then what is the gap with regards to that particular project, or do you not know?
Nope, it's between 10 and 1/2, 11 million or so, that we're able to capitalize on or use for funding for the Performing Arts Center, or at least that I would feel safely that we have, you know, kind of in the coffers to use. The project budget that we've received most recently was closer to 17 million. As you guys know, construction costs have just gone through the roof this last year, so we're trying to close that gap, and of course, find efficiencies through value engineering for different projects that we've got, but, go ahead.
Okay, and so when I said capital stack, what I meant was, do we have that broken down in terms of the 10.5 as an example? Do we know what general fund support is? Do we know what we're using?
So no, no general fund. We have some PEG fees that I understand are part of it. I didn't bring that document, I'm sorry, wasn't ready for that one. And then we had a $2 million state appropriation, so between cash on hand that we had for the PEG fees, the amount we could potentially bond for for PEG fees, and then that state appropriation got us to that 10 and 1/2, 11 million dollar mark.
Okay. I'm seeing Mark nodding, perfect, okay. First, we're going to go to City Attorney Jim Smarica, and then Brian Jackson, Councilman Jackson, sorry.
I just wanted to follow up on that. I thought I had an, oh, okay. Following up on Vice President Wood's comment about contracts, we have somewhere around 800 contracts that run through the system, laserfish, and it's practically impossible along the way to verify the insurances, the taxes, the licenses. And so my suggestion, if you're going to look at that, is that should be the responsibility of the originating department, to make sure that is all there, and maybe even a checklist, just to speed things up and to be sure there's, nothing falls through the cracks.
That's great, thanks, Jim.
All right, first, oh, and because I think what we're doing is piggybacking, Vice President...
Could I follow up on that before?
Sure.
If that's all right?
Yep.
I understand what you're saying, Jim, for new contracts, but I think, you know, part of the issue is purchase orders that then are just reactivated over and over again, and that's where we're having some problems.
All right, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, just a couple of questions, primarily from the outline, the overview. Since it is an overview, looking at the first one here about potentially new revenue sources, I guess, just a general question, like, can you identify or at least speak to any potential new revenue source?
Yep, so a couple, just right beneath it, obviously, the public safety is a millage, but we're obviously hoping that's going to stimulate some economic development around that new construction. And same thing for the performing arts, so focusing on those projects, doing a project like that could stimulate potentially the neighborhood or the other downtown region to bring in new revenue, so it'd increase, you know, property tax values, which of course, more people are going to move in and put a restaurant there, because there's a Performing Arts Center across the hall, which could drive new business. So when I say kind of going on long-term revenues, it's more focused on how can we either grow our tax base or increase what we have, or bring some kind of new life to the city that we otherwise wouldn't have, without focusing on that specifically.
Yeah, thank you for that, and, you know, we all talk about new revenue sources just generally, so I was just kind of wondering if...
Yeah, thank you.
One other question in an overview. You mentioned on here that you're working with the chamber and our lobbying team to identify legislative asks to benefit the city. Can you kind of detail that partnership or work with the chamber and what you're asking for?
Yep, definitely, and I'll also, I'll loop Mark in, too, because he's a part of this process as well, through CAPCOG, kind of the regional ask. I think the chamber had brought forward, you know, the idea of having all of the counties and the chamber work together on an ask from the legislature versus us all kind of going independently to make sure that we had kind of a streamlined ask, or some high-level things that we knew we all wanted. So there's things in there on behalf of the city that I think would be beneficial for economic development purposes, as well as, I believe, LEPFA has some asks, too, for some building improvements. The region itself has different asks, but I think the focus really is on the city of Lansing, knowing that if we benefit, everyone benefits as a subsidiary of that.
I guess just one more follow-up. So you named regional partners in the chamber. Is that like, everybody puts their name on it and signs it, even though it's like cities, possibly private groups, or does it just all go together?
So like the different counties that have been representing, kind of through CAPCOG, and then all of their lobbyists, so we're all kind of pulling our lobbying efforts together. So we have a meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks with all the different lobbying groups that represent all the different regions, to say, okay, you guys, we're all getting on the same page, here's the page of things we're going to ask on behalf of the region, and then using all of our lobbying efforts to go after it.
All right, thank you. Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you. Hey Shelby, nice to see you again. Question for you about city investments. Do we have any investment policies or like ways to invest city treasury money while it's sitting and waiting for, to be spent on payroll and things like that?
The last time I was here, I know it needed to be updated. It was incredibly out of date, if we had one really at all. I know that's always been a point of contention with our auditors, to get that updated and on the books, so I think it's in the works from the finance team. I'm not sure the final stages of it, but it's definitely, it needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions, comments for Ms. Freyer? Vice President Wood.
I know you've got a lot on your plate, but part of the whole reason that council created this position was to look at the departments and look at the redundancies, and to look at recommendations from the departments on how they could improve what they're doing. So, and looking at this, how do you intend on doing that, and how are you starting that and making those...
Thinking about it. I think one of my focuses has been, there are certain departments that touch all the departments, so for example, you know, finance, IT, and HR. Not that we all don't work together, but those three departments have to be extremely high-functioning to service all of the other departments, and so those would be kind of my areas of focus out of the gate, are making sure that we're operating those most efficiently, because they service everyone else. So I know we've struggled before with vacancies and trying to get folks in to help fill the positions that we have to get the work done. I think that's an area that we can look at in the future. I think having, you know, new and improvements, as far as how we're going to charge those departments. So for example, parking, parking for city offices gets charged to our HR budget versus individual budgets across the city. It's just something that's always been done that way, and it's just how it is, where if we actually went through and reviewed which departments are using which parking spots and charged those to the correct funds, potentially could be a savings for general fund. And that's a very small example, but my focus has been really on the departments that touch all the departments, like HR, finance, and IT.
All right, Councilman Brown.
Thank you so much, President Hussein. Good evening. Thank you so much for providing this update. I was wondering, as the chief strategy officer and, you know, coming back into this role, have you put together kind of like a strategic plan? I know that you said your role was one-way previously, and now it's changed. So is there a strategic plan that you've kind of put together over the next 12 months, and said, these are, you know, the core issues that I'm looking to resolve, the pathway forward, and then through that, you know, these are the updates that are part of that kind of continuous flow of your services and what you want to accomplish over the next 12 months?
Yeah, I have mixed feelings on strategic plans, but I'll keep most of my thoughts to myself. I think oftentimes, we spend a lot of time putting together a document, and then it never gets used, because we all work on this great plan, and then half the people leave, or we never revisit it again. So although I think it's great to go through the, kind of the exercise of determining what priorities are, I haven't spent a ton of time just drafting a document to say, this is the city's plan. So certainly, we can talk about that, if that makes sense to do. I think what I've been focusing my time on is, well, one, you know, projects assigned from the mayor to help out from an economic development or project management standpoint, but then also focused on identifying those assets and liabilities that we can kind of restructure or retool to have, you know, ongoing savings for the city. So I've kind of developed my own kind of priorities, that I've, of course, been blessed by the mayor, as far as, yep, go ahead and work on these things. But as far as a comprehensive strategic plan on behalf of the city, nope, I haven't done that yet. I think we need to get there across departments, and having kind of common goals and themes to all move us forward in one direction, so that we're not siloed, but my guess that will come in later months that I'm here.
Okay, thank you. All right, folks, are there other questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Frey, we certainly appreciate you being here. Oh, I lie, we all lie. Vice President Wood.
You're here this evening, and we will be putting together our budget priorities, possibly later this evening, or at least next week we will. Is there any budget priority that you've seen that you would like to see as part of, that council would take a look at?
In addition to what's already there, you're suggesting, or to make a change for next year?
Yeah.
I mean, I think we, one of the things I think would be really great is to really, you know, back our economic development team, and that the folks that we have working around that. I know, you know, we've made some changes, of course, to that department, and brought them in-house, and done some things. We talk a big game about economic development, but we got to start putting resources where we need it to be, and growing that team, and having additional resources focused on economic development, truly a team that's going to go out and bring new businesses, or help with housing, or all of our other issues that we have, I think would be a really powerful move. So I would encourage us to spend some time on that budget, and see if there aren't things that we can do to move funds that way, to either staff it more appropriately, or partner with other groups to bring in additional resources.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this time I'm going to provide some think time, some wait time. Do we have any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all right, we appreciate you being here, and we look forward to working with you well in the future. All right? Thanks so much.
Sounds great, thank you.
That brings us to discussion-action item, let's see, this is number six, C. This is the Board of Water and Light proposed rate changes. We were set to take this up, and we had actually planned on having Board of Water and Light board officials here to talk to us a little bit about, you know, the proposed rate changes for all four utilities that are part of the Lansing Board of Water and Light. We found out last week that due to scheduling, they were not going to be able to attend. And so with that, Vice President Wood, myself, and our office manager, Sherry Boat, we discussed and thought it was important enough to still come forth with the information, provide the opportunity to discuss, because the reality is, the board for the charter is getting ready to go through their public input process, and a lot of times, you know, frankly, folks don't know about that process. And a lot of times, you know, frankly, folks don't, don't know about that process. They don't know about what's being proposed prior to. They don't necessarily know how to participate in the process, even if they do know it's being proposed. And then all of a sudden they end up with a bill and, and the rates have, you know, have elevated. So what we wanted to do was have a quick conversation and then talk about some ways that the public can actually get involved in the process leading up to September 27th, when the board will actually vote on the proposed rate increases. Okay? I talked to the chief financial officer who is Heather Shawa from Lansing Board of Water and Light and I, you know, frankly, I told her, I said, look, I said, in our council packets, we have 150 pages of confusion. I said, what I need you to do is break this down for me and for my council colleagues in a way where we can actually get out, share information, support folks as they start, you know, trying to process this and provide, or I should say, position themselves to provide for, for public input. Also, we spent quite a bit of time on the phone and it. Exactly. But in any event, things have, have come into focus. So what the board is considering right now are rate increases for both 2023 and 2024. Okay, so what they're proposing is a two-year rate increase strategy. Our, our last rate increase strategy actually covered three years. Rate increases are by utility, so there are four utilities. Unlike anything we've seen dating back to probably 2014, we actually are going to see rate increases should the proposals be accepted by the Board of Water and Light, sorry, Board of Commissioners, we'll actually see all four utilities with some measure of an increase. Okay? We're going to start with the electric utility. When they looked at potential revenues and they looked at costs, they realized that they needed a 2.05% increase across the utility. The utility has 2.05%. However, so, so make sure you keep your pen handy, there are seven customer classes with regards to the electric utility. The rate increases for each class do actually take into consideration cost of providing services versus revenues for each class. So there is some fluctuation from class to class. So as an example, the residential increase for electric will be 4.5%, okay? Because the cost to serve essentially the residential versus the projected revenues actually creates a 7% gap. So what they do, because some classes won't actually see increases or smaller increases such as commercial industrial because their revenues are exceeding their costs, what they do is they take some of that excess to essentially soften the blow for the residential customer. So we are looking at four and a half percent increases in both 2023 as well as 2024. And those become effective November 1st, 2022 for 2023, and then November 1st, 2023 for 2024. For the average customer, just so folks know, and I'll stop in just a second, for the average customer, what we're looking at for 2023 is a $5 a month increase, actually just south of five, but almost $5. And then for 2023, I'm sorry, 2024, we're looking at a $5.57 a month increase. You have any questions with regards to the electric? Yep, I absolutely can. Yeah. And so what I'll actually do is I'll follow up in an email because it's not broken down this neatly and that, again, 150 pages of confusion. The reality is the, the way that public utilities are regulated, they actually have to provide their proposals in that format. And so I appreciate it, obviously, Heather Shawa helping me kind of break that down. With regards to the water utility, there are five customer classes. In terms of the water utility in general, there is a 9.5% increase for both years. The residential increase, so for residential water, you're looking at a 9.2% increase for year one, and you're looking at a 9.3% increase for year two. Okay, so in this case, residential users are actually closer to meeting costs than as an example, non-residential customers. So they're actually going to see a smaller increase than the non-residential customer. The non-residential customer will see an increase of 10%, both in 2023 and 2024. Okay? There is going to be a discounted rate for the first, what they call CCF, these are units of consumption. So there's a discounted rate for the first two. The average residential user uses five CCFs or units of consumption per month. Okay, so that means for a residential consumer, the average will see a $3.35 a month increase in year one, so 2023. And the average residential water consumer will see a $3.71 increase in year two. And, yep, Councilman, sorry, Vice President Wood?
And just to clarify, we all know that the uses that we pay for our water, you're paying almost triple that for the sewer rate, which continues to increase because of the CSO. So.
Just to be clear, yep, we appreciate that. In terms of the steam utility, you're looking at a 9.95% increase for both years. There really are two classes. There's very few residential, if any, they do have to have a residential rate that required. But to be honest with you, Heather didn't, didn't know if they even had any residential users of, of the steam utility. And then for the chilled water utility, there are actually 19 chilled water customers in the city of Lansing and there's 4% increases for both 2023 as well as 2024. Right now, the Board of Water and Light administration is getting ready to actually put forth a presentation of this proposal to the Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners. I envision a PowerPoint of some sort that's actually going to be uploaded to the Board of Water and Light's website by the end of the week. And then there are a couple of opportunities for folks to get involved. And so I wanted to make sure that we made this as public and transparent as possible. What ends up happening so often is that folks see increases in their, in their bills and then they come to council and they air their grievances. We really have no say in the rate increases with regards to the Board of Water and Light. They have their own Board of Commissioners, they have their own administration, they are, you know, for all intents and purposes, their own entity and, and they make their decisions and they have their own very public process as, as, you know, really kind of laid out per the charter. And so what they're going to do is they're going to actually have a finance committee meeting tomorrow, September 13th at 5:30 PM. This will follow their committee of the whole meeting. Their finance committee meeting will take place at the Depot at 1203 South Washington Avenue. They will have Board of Water and Light finance staff there to provide commissioners with an update on the proposed rate strategy. However, tomorrow, no action on the proposed rate strategy will take place. There will be an opportunity, however, for public input. There will be a Board of Water and Light special rate hearing. This is Tuesday, September 20th, 5:30 PM. This is at the Depot, again, at 1203 South Washington Avenue. At this meeting, Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners will hold a special hearing on the proposed rate strategy. So there'll be an opportunity for the public to provide input again. No action on the proposed rate strategy will take place. And the reason why it was so critical that we had this meeting now and we got this information out is that had we not moved forward, we would have had this conversation, conversation on the 26th, which, which meant two-thirds of the, the public's opportunity to provide input would have been over. Because on September 27th, which is a Tuesday, the Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners will have their regular meeting that will take place at 5:30 PM at the Depot at 1203, again, South Washington Avenue. And the commissioners will actually vote on the proposed rate strategy. Okay, so I encourage council members to share that information. Again, we'll follow up in an email after this meeting or early tomorrow so that you can share that with your constituents. But we certainly want people to be in the know, number one, and also as involved as possible. Are there any questions, comments before we move on? Vice President Wood?
I, I appreciate President Hussein, the time that you took in talking with their chief financial officer. But I must say that I'm extremely disappointed that the Board of Water and Light isn't here. Again, we don't bring them in that often. This, this information was forwarded on to the city clerk, which was then forwarded on to a committee of a whole. And as you did indicate, often what happens is that once the, they receive their first bill after a rate increase, you know, people are down here and upset that they weren't aware of that. And I think, you know, our whole goal in putting this on the agenda was to make sure that people had that opportunity. So I'm just, you know, we've had this discussion privately, so I wanted to make, you know, publicly, I am disappointed that the board chose not to be here tonight.
Sure. And I don't disagree. Are there other comments, questions? Mr. Lawrence?
This was brought to my attention this morning. The Board of Water and Light is hosting two community resource fairs coming up. The first one's September 20th from 1:00 to 5:00 at LETS. The second is the next day, the 21st, from 4:00 to 8:00 at the Alfred Schmitt Community Center on the South Side.
All right, we appreciate it.
We'll announce those in council too.
Fantastic. Vice President Wood?
Those resource fairs are not to discuss the rates though.
No, totally.
Yeah, so I just want to make that clear. This, they're having a number of organizations that will be there to show different community assets that we have.
Councilman Spatafor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. One of the things, I don't know if you all know this in my day job, I deal with electric and gas commodities for utilities. And we just got a note today from our supplier that we're going to see a 40% increase in natural gas costs. So it's even more important now than ever that BWL leans in on renewables and controlling our own fuels for electricity generation. In fact, I want to talk about this at budget priorities, but the Inflation Reduction Act allows municipal governments and nonprofits to now directly receive the tax benefit of installation of solar panels, whereas before we had to go through a private developer. So I'm hoping we can throw that into our budget priorities to have the city look at how we can leverage resources to generate more of our electricity here in town to help stem, stymie these rate increases that we see from various things like the war in Ukraine or the volatility associated with COVID-19 or just rising costs in general. So, thank you.
Oops, sorry, thank you. Are there others, questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on. Oh, sorry, Councilwoman Smith.
And I apologize for being late. And if this has been mentioned, I do apologize too. As we're looking at the proposed rate changes, I've had a couple of calls from folks who apparently, you know, are the, the non-shut-off policy has, has, is gone, the, the moratorium. And so as we're looking at this, I think we also need to look at whether or not there's going to be some sort of consideration as these rates are changing, some sort of consideration if our residents are unable to, to pay and, and what that looks like as well.
All right. Sorry, I was dealing with another council member. There was no question, was there? Okay, perfect, just a comment. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and move on to a discussion action item. Let's see, we're on six D. This is a discussion on payment in lieu of taxes and the impacts of those pilots. We had, this is, I guess, the meeting of cancellations and, you know, folks not being able to make it. We had originally scheduled a presentation by MISTDA officials. We have long discussed pilots, we've long discussed pilots' impacts on developers, you know, basically their success rate or their ability to be successful in terms of actually going forth to MISTDA and, and applying for LIHTX. We've talked about the, the impact of those pilots with regards to city, general fund coffers and the like. And we've also talked about, you know, some concerns we have with MISTDA programs to help finance low-income and affordable housing projects. And so we did ask them to come in. Unfortunately, they, I think at some point last week, let us know that they had some scheduling conflicts as well and they were not able to make it. However, with it being pilot season, hold on one second, we did want to at least have a document in front of us that really brought to life the impact of pilots on the city's finances. Because again, we have a number of pilots that are before us even tonight. And so in your online packets, there is a document that we received from the city assessor's office that talks about the pilots that are active. The, the, we'll call them service charges that are being paid or the, the payments that are being paid to the city of Lansing in lieu of those taxes that they would pay had they not had pilots approved by this body or some, you know, form or iteration of council. And then what we would be receiving from those different developments and properties if there was no pilot in place. And so we'll talk about that in a minute. However, I think there's some urgency being felt by Vice President Wood. So Vice President Wood, you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify and I appreciate, you know, your overview. But again, MISTDA picked this date. So I, you know, it wasn't as if we threw the date out there and said, please come. MISTDA picked the date. So I'm not sure again why people decided not to show up, but they chose not to show up.
Sure, yep. I appreciate the clarification. So if you look at, just very quickly, if you look at the document from the assessor's office, you'll, you'll notice that right now we have roughly 28 active pilots in the city of Lansing. And some of those range, you know, essentially they range anywhere from 10 years to, to 45 years. With pilots in place, we receive on an annual basis, $1,022,098 in payments in lieu of taxes. Without the pilots with regards to these particular properties, we would be receiving on an annual basis, $3,771,694.26 in property taxes. So the annual loss in revenues due to pilots on the books is therefore about $2,749,000. I'm sorry, $2,749,595.42. And of course, this document does break each of those down by pilot, by project. But again, as we consider pilots, we certainly wanted you to have this information in front of you. Okay? So that being said, are there any comments, questions? Vice President Wood?
Did quick math on this and if all of those pilots were 30 years, because a number of these, what happens is about the time that the pilot runs out, then they apply for another mortgage to revamp the place. You're talking for a 30-year process, $94 million.
All right. Are there other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to discussion action item six E, discussion on fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget priorities. We have to wrap our process up in terms of committee of the whole and city council on the 26th in order to convey that over to the administration by October 1st as called for by the, by the charter. And so what we're doing right now, you know, is we, we are doing work in committee, right? And so development and planning, city operations and the like.
Right.
Are all putting forth their budget priorities. And hopefully in earnest, we are working to get that done, get that conveyed over to council so that we can have a conversation on the 26th. In terms of committee of the whole, we can certainly have a conversation tonight, but what I anticipated was having actually you all consider what you wanted to see in those, on that list of priorities, actually conveying that over to Sherry by, what is it, September 20th? By September 20th, we, myself, Vice President Wood and Sherry are actually scheduled to have a leadership meeting that day. And so it'd be fantastic if we could have that maybe by noon on September 20th. And then what we could actually do, and it's again, much easier if it's in writing. So what we could actually do is then bring them into the committee of the whole discussion on the 26th. We could certainly look at adopting those written budget policies as part of our committee of the whole process. And of course, we can take a look at some of those items that need to be eliminated because they were addressed in the prior budget. So if that is palatable to you all, we can actually move past that item. Is that okay? Fantastic. No questions, comments? Excellent. So again, September 20th at noon. That takes us to discussion action item six F, city attorney overview of the status of the Lansing Township annexation ballot issue. Mr. Smirka, you have a floor?
Thank you, Mr. President. This goes together with item G, the closed session, which I have asked the council not to hold today because as I'm going to explain, there is no longer any pending litigation on this matter to allow it. But in a future council or committee, the whole meeting as you would schedule, I would like to present a, a writing to you from the attorney's office regarding future strategy and legal conclusions that have come out of a week's worth of hearings before the court this week. So this all, this litigation started with a request, a written request from approximately 126 Lansing Township residents who, and I know the word annexation has been used, but it was really a request to detach and be annexed to the city, detached from the council, from the township. And using our research in the office, going back many years on annexation and the Township Act, it was our conclusion that there was a section in the Township Act, specifically section three, that deals specifically with islands in townships. And that if an island, when I say an island, if a piece of the township's completely surrounded by the city, that's an island. And their specific provision was that you could put the resolution to the county clerk, it goes on the ballot, and then the vote of those residents in the island areas would determine whether they wanted to divest or not. I mean, a completely democratic process of self-determination. It's not a situation where the city was trying to force an annexation under any of those statutes. It was a request from residents. That's the way the government works. So the township countered. So the township countered with a lawsuit saying Section 3 does not apply, but Section 5 applies, and the difference between 3 and 5, 5 does not say completely surrounded, it's just contiguous, and Section 5 requires a 20% petition and then a vote of both the city, the City of Lansing, plus the residents in the area. We were served with that lawsuit, you know, we argued the case the day after Labor Day in front of Judge Kennedy. The hearing started somewhere around 10:45, 10:30 in the morning, and I think it took about two hours, and it was a debate over the elements of which statute applies. There was no case law, although the city has case law that allows for an interpretation that 3 should apply. So we debated back and forth, and then you had other issues about where's the irreparable harm of putting a ballot issue before the voters, and who knows? It's all speculative whether they all approve it or not. So we argued that back and forth. At the end of the day, Judge Kennedy ruled that he was going to issue a temporary restraining order preventing the clerk from placing this matter on the ballot. And so that was entered on Tuesday, this is the day after Labor Day this last week. Wednesday, it kept everybody up all night, and we filed a 25 to 30-page, a brief, an application to the Michigan Court of Appeals to review Judge Kennedy's decision. That was done on Wednesday at about 4:30. We waited for two days because the ballots had to be, the language had to be certified by the clerk, we were told at that time by Friday. So about Friday, at about 2:30 or so, the Court of Appeals granted immediate consideration of our request, but refused to overturn Judge Kennedy. So the temporary restraining order stayed into effect until Monday, today, this morning, at which time we had another hearing in front of Judge Kennedy, and we found out at that time that the deadline was not Friday, at least that was my understanding of the county attorney's interpretation, as it didn't go to the printer until tonight. So the temporary restraining order was dissolved, and the clerk at that point had the ability to actually put those questions before the voters. However, the arguments continued on, again, the application of 3, that's Section 3 of the Charter of Township Act, and Chapter, and Section 5 of the Charter of Township Act. It also ensued discussion about whether the township is standing to even bring this when it's a matter for the voters, because there's no case law that says that a city or a township has any vested right in its residents or its boundaries. We argued irreparable harm, and again, all of this is recorded if somebody wants to see it. At the end of the hearing, the judge said he was going to make his order permanent for this election, and so an order was drafted, and a couple hours before this meeting started, the order was signed, and the case is closed. So the case is over, the matter will not be on the ballot for the residents this November. That's the status of it right now. And again, I will be willing to discuss legal strategies with you about this whole matter on annexations at a future meeting.
Fantastic. All right, do we have any questions, comments? All right, we certainly appreciate the update. Do you, do you? Do you have a question? Are you sure? Okay. And what did you call, Vice President Wood, earlier? Council, council member? And another thing? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we, since we will not be going into a closed session, we actually, at 5:55, will adjourn, and we will, oh, it's just that type of meeting. Yes, Mr. Smirka, go ahead. So we are not adjourned.
I'd like to take this opportunity, and I know that I'll be discussing this with council leadership this week, but we have one of our new assistant city attorneys in the audience, Matt Staples. Amani Rishmani had to leave, she was here also. We're getting everyone acclimated, they're in district court prosecuting, but we'll be attending committees and staffing committees and staffing council, everyone else. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so for real this time, we're going to adjourn. Yep, we'll see you guys soon.